Finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole armor of God, that ye may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places.
Welcome to the first episode of Moco Resistance. My name is Harold Maldonado. Some of you might know me from last year. I was the GOP candidate for District Seven for the County Council in the midterms. We're here to present you the first episode. Today is Wednesday, June the 7th, year of our Lord 2023, and the first episode is called "County Council Not Working For Us." We've decided to create this channel not only to provide information to the county, but to actually provide real factual, unbiased information to the general public. As last year during the campaign, we noticed a lot of residents didn't know much about the issues, didn't know much about the relevant topics and issues and problems that the county is facing, because, let's be honest, the local media doesn't do a good job in informing the general public of the real relevant issues that affect parents, students, and business owners or retired residents. So, our effort here is to present to you the real information without any bias, although we have a bias. We have a bias for truth, for honesty. So, let's kick it off. How did we get here? We're, as many of you have watched the channel teaser, we're under a woke, progressive, and extreme-left occupation. And this occupation was subtle before the midterms last year. And after the midterms, this occupation was cemented, and we see the effects of that occupation today. The media is aiding and abetting this occupation, and it's our job to protect the interests of our families, our children. So, we have the extreme left that has infiltrated all aspects of county life. We have transgenderism in schools full throttle. We've seen yesterday the clash between parents and the LGTB community that basically not, they're not, they're not accepting any other opinions other than what they perceive as to be the good cause. Crime is out of control. I don't care where you live in the county. You've seen crime rise exponentially. And as I often say during the campaign last year, I said, you know, if we don't win, if we don't like, at least make a dent in placing one or two GOP members in the council, then crime is going to be, is going to spread like wildfire, and it has, unfortunately. We have the, our economy in decline, stagnant, businesses are closing every day, every week. And we are a grassroots movement that aims at informing county residents, like I was saying before. And we're not the only ones. We are, we are part of this niche of grassroots movements that are spreading all over the county. For example, right here, I have, I put, you know, some accounts on Twitter that are basically, you know, spreading the news. They're awakening, they have awakened to the reality of the issues and, you know, what the county council stands for. And they're fighting back, and we're fighting back. So, we're aligning ourselves with these groups in terms of providing facts to the general public without any bias, like I was saying the local media has. So, we have James Santori from DMV, provides good information. We have, here's the, here's the event I was talking to you about yesterday that happened. We have Greg, Son of Money from Alny, who was very active, posting commentary, posting breaking news, etc. We have Moco News, for example, right in front of you. It's, I don't know whether they're new, but I've never seen their posts before. So, it's another account that provides information on what's going on in our county and also in Peachy County. And as you can see, you know, there's a lot of crime going across the region, and these accounts do a good job in providing information. So, we will rely on independent journalists. Every resident at least has the information in order to make educated, to make educated opinions and to make educated decisions in terms of elections, and also to push for residents to be active in their communities. So, our aim here is to spark interest in local politics, because it affects you. It affects your, if you have kids, it affects, you know, what your son or daughter is learning in school. It affects, if you're a business owner, it affects how you are treated by the county council in terms of opening a business, dealing with the permits, etc. And also, most importantly, where does your money go? We have property taxes, we have income taxes, and as a taxpayer, I certainly would like to know where my money goes every, every year, every year. So, and here we have Clean Slate Moco. So, this source just came out in the last three to six months, and they have a website, and we'll be using them, their information to provide you with information, because they are actually, they have a website, and they have very interesting articles that touch from everyday issues to commentary and interesting articles. So, and this is also one of the grassroots accounts that has come online, and we'll be using, and you'll be hearing a lot from Clean Slate Moco. And we have Steve Austin here that provides commentary. We have other accounts like Epic Moco, and they are calling out, calling out the lies, the disingenuous effort by the county councils to portray themselves as something that they're not. And what they're not is they do not represent the views and opinions of county residents. See, we're here to extend our message from last year, where we saw a lot of residents actually be happy with a fresh set of eyes, set, you know, fresh set of ideas. And we've said that the county council preaches equality, preaches diversity, and they're lying. They're bought and paid for by special interests, and they don't work for us. They do not have a slight idea of what the county needs. And here's an example. Here's a county council member, Kristen Mink, actually stating that, calling the Muslim and Christian, mostly minority folks that were protesting against the LGTB curriculum in schools yesterday at the Board of Education. And here's her comments. So, I'll let you guys decide what you think of that, but she calls them white supremacists. And if it's not racist, I don't know what is. But again, they're disingenuous, they're lying, they don't work for us, and they have an agenda. And that agenda is not your agenda or one of the best interests of the county's agenda. So, I'll let you go ahead and see for yourself.
I had a lot of really good conversations this morning with many of the people who have testified here. And, you know, and it's more complicated, I think, than a lot of people would like to, than a lot of people would like to think it is. The, this issue has unfortunately put, it does put some, not all, of course, some Muslim families on the same side of an issue as white supremacists and outright bigots and, you know, however, the folks who I've talked to here today, I would not put in the same category as those folks, although, you know, it's again complicated, because they're falling on the same side of this particular issue.
So, again, the county council preaches equality, economic racial and economic justice, but they don't. They don't embrace diversity. There's just, that's, you know, they have a big bullhorn, and they have their local media backing them up. You will not see this in any local media. Last year, we said, you know, if they win in the midterms, they'll have full control of the county, and they have. And they have, because of that result of the midterms, which we'll get on, we'll discuss in later episodes, and they have basically done a lot of things that are abrasive, and they don't hide it anymore. They're full-on far-left extremists, and they're not going to stop at anything until they fully push their agenda, which is socialist Marxist communist agenda that seeks to destroy the middle class, that seeks to destroy any resemblance of equality in our education system. And here's an example. Today, we'll look at the budget that was just approved. And before we get into the numbers, we will have interviews, we will talk to stakeholders, we will talk to many grassroots organizations in the county that are pushing, pushing against what the county council agenda is presenting to the public. So, without any further ado, let's get into the numbers. Here's the fiscal year 2324 budget approved. It was approved. Six point seven million dollars. We have increase in taxes. Instead of the 10%, property tax increase, we have a 4.7, which is still high, and we'll get into that. We have a 7% increase in water bills, and we'll look at that. And, for example, the county budget talks about focusing on three areas: education, economic development, and housing. And from a deep dive on the budget, they don't address education at all. They just throw money at it. In terms of economic development, there's no, there's no actual line items that say, you know, here's how we're going to increase economic development, or how we're going to improve it. There's nothing in the budget about reducing permits or incentivizing, you know, businesses to open shop in the county. So, we'll look at that. And the budget is catering to pay for sanctuary status, and we'll look at that, the money that's given to NGOs, to CASA, for example. So, we'll look at that. In terms of education, as we said, the budget is throwing money at the problem, and that's not the issue. One of the highlights of the big portion of the $3.2 billion GPS is that over 45% of that budget is not for education, is not for, is not to pay for instruction, is to pay other staff that don't deal with teaching the kids. And we have math and reading scores declining at the same time. There's no money provided, that has been provided for psychological support after the horrendous and heavily damaged, you know, psychological effects of the pandemic, of the close downs. If the county was really truthful about what is, what is sane as part of their agendas, as in racial and economic justice, okay, most of the, most of the county small businesses are owned by minorities, and they've closed them down during the lockdown. How does that match up with their agenda? So, there's no money for psychological support, and there's no mention of SROs in the budget. And a result of that is, you probably read it in the news nowadays, that, you know, we have shootings everywhere in school plan. And actually, there is, there was a shooting today, and one of my sources was telling me there was a shooting today in one of the schools in Maryland. So, it's the times we're in. And again, economic development, it's racial and economic justice propaganda. There's nothing, there's nothing, there's no substance behind this. The budget is hurting low-income and fixed-income residents, as you will see. And, you know, I can give you my opinion, I can give you my analysis, but we'll let the stakeholders in this area, you know, provide you with their comments and analysis as well. In this case, we'll provide your information from the Montgomery County Taxpayers' League, who have presented an overview of their review of the budget. So, another point of the budget is, they actually say in the budget that we'll have a mild recession, which is completely wrong. We're headed to a very deep recession, and the county is actually not aware of this reality. And again, it's another case of the county council and the executive not being in sync with the reality and lying to the public. So, and the budget is not addressing any business impediments which are very wrong. It's overregulated, permits, the burden on permits is heavy, and this makes the county not competitive. And the tax rates that businesses pay in county are not competitive with other parts or other counties around us. So, and here's how the county manipulates the general public and the opinion of the public. Here's a little chart for the visual people. So, they draft the budget, they oversize it, they focus on paying off support, as you will see in a few minutes. And here, most of the budget is basically increasing all the items, most of the items, and it's to pay and to satisfy the political support that the county council and executive have received in the last, in the last year. And that is shown by increasing salaries, increasing salaries over the market value and over the Consumer Price Index inflation. So, use the media and the organizations to start the conversation. We've seen many organizations talk about the budget and how education is important. Yes, you know, those discussions are great, but this is a show. It's just, again, a propaganda that the county council is pushing. Then we'll hit, we'll see here, they create a fake opposition. They assign CC members. We have different council members that are opposed to certain budget items, like Evan Glass says he wants to have a more transparent procedures on drafting the budget and coming up with the budget, which is just a show. It's a lie. And then they actually sell the budget via public forums. And these forums are attended, not by the general public, they're attended by the county council and their political and support in organizations like CASA and others. And so, then we see these organizations pushing items, the teachers' unions, and they push, they push for full funding of MCPS, of course. And then, and then these organizations show support. And I'll give you an example right now of how, how the, you know, this process goes. And then, the budget is approved. So, to the public eye, to the general resident who is not aware of what's going on in the county, they very well see that, you know, the county council is discussing the budget, and it's having public forums to discuss the budget. So, in their opinion, you know, the county council, the government, and they're doing a good job in terms of being transparent. But it's not. Everything is a show. And then, right now, I'll show you what I mean.
Now, it is time to do what is right for teachers, students, and communities. We urge you to fully fund the MCPS budget. Real per pupil spending in Montgomery County is down almost $1,500 since 2008. The only way to combat this trend is to make meaningful investment in our public schools. Some of you have touted the thousands of votes you received in winning your seats. Well, those thousands of voters, I want you to pass this revenue enhancement measure. And they sent you all a gift. We educators are generous souls. Countless numbers of us go into our own pockets each year to buy book bags and other supplies for our students. So, since you're giving us this recognition today, we have something for you too. By seeking to make cuts in the MCPS budget, you all continue to reveal that you are not willing to do everything that is necessary for our kids, our communities, or our future.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate. We're going to read the proclamation, so let it come through some started.
Whereas Teacher Appreciation Day provides a special opportunity to highlight the importance of our educators, including almost 14,000 active teachers at Montgomery County Public Schools.
Rebecca.
Let her speak. Let her speak.
Let her speak. Let her speak.
Hold on, hold on. If anyone's earned your respect.
Let him speak. Let him speak. Let him speak.
Louder.
Let him speak.
Louder.
Let him speak.
Louder.
Let him speak.
Louder.
Let her. Fund the schools for future years.
We're in recess.
We don't accept your lame explanation.
Fund the school for this generation.
We don't accept your lame explanation. Fund the schools for this generation.
We don't accept your lame explanation. Fund the schools for this generation.
For a $600,000 home, it's $60 a month.
You are walking away from educators.
Yes, you say you honor.
So, I hope you enjoyed the last video. It was basically what we've been saying, that NGOs, the teacher unions, and all the other unions work for the county council and for the executive. So, now we'll turn into the analysis and review of the Montgomery County Taxpayers' League assessment and review of the budget. So, here we go. Here's a little summary before we go and listen to the analysis of Mr. Gordon Breen, who was part of the Montgomery County Taxpayers' League. So, we have a summary where they say economic forecast is too optimistic, which we agree. Property tax used for revenue to higher thresholds. So, if you ever wonder why your property has increased in value in the last, you know, three to five years, it's because the county uses those values in order to increase those taxes. So, yeah, it's like Janet Yellen said a few months ago, saying that if you have, you know, have certain assets in the stock market, if you haven't sold or realize the benefits of the revenue or the gains from those investments, you'll be taxed on the value of those taxes. So, it's basically the same thing. And again, 45% of MCPS budget is for non-teaching costs. So, we have non-teaching staff, we have the, we have our, the MCPS growing exponentially, which is part of the problem, which is that the government is growing in Montgomery County, and it's inefficient. And this growth in the government is also apt for corruption, apt for financial inequality in terms of assigning or designating, you know, funds to where we residents see importance, for example, in improving the economic conditions, incentivizing, you know, job creation, etc. And so, we have another data point here where they say they pay increase for county employees beyond market or CPI. And this is very interesting, because if, this is just an opinion, but we'll see, you know, with the numbers that lines up. If, if I'm part of the government, and if I, if there's an election, I can promise every union under my control or under my, under the government to support my party, and then with a promise that I will raise salaries across the board and even beyond the market value. So, that's just another fact right there. We have property tax bill includes charges for climate change. And of course, climate change is a big issue, big topic. The county now is pushing green energy, and with the passing of Thrive 2050, they're in full throttle to eliminate fossil fuels in the next few years. So, we'll touch on that in later episodes as well. So, and then, the county executive circumventing a county charter and using estate laws. And so, we'll hear from some of the Montgomery County Taxpayers' League shortly, but these are the highlights that I took from listening to them. And again, we, as a government, Montgomery County is less efficient, efficient in our schools, and for example, and less efficient than Fairfax County. So, companies, people, residents are leaving the county, and that's continuing. People are leaving to other counties, because other counties, their school system is more aligned with the core subjects, and the quality of life is better than other counties. So, Mr. Gordon Breen from the Montgomery County Taxpayers' League presented a review and overview of the budget on April 24. And these are the highlights of that presentation.
This is where the money goes. And as you can see, in the upper right-hand corner, education gets 52% of the budget. And every year, it gets a little bigger. And this is probably one of the biggest stories we have about becoming your budget, is how much should we be spending on education, because it takes money away from other things. And they require a property tax increase. We'll talk to that in a second. A general county government includes all the things that we just summarized, including public safety, health and living service, transportation, non-operation, non-departmental accounts, etc. And parking planning is a very tiny sliver at the top. So, that's how the money gets split up from the big picture corner group. The revenues, property taxes are still our The revenues, property taxes are still our number one revenue source. That's 32.7%, 33%, followed by income taxes, which are 20%. In a local government, not too many years ago, I've been practicing for over 50 years and I can tell you that at one point, property taxes were the primary and perhaps as much as 90% of the revenue source for local governments. That changed with the introduction of income taxes in many states. And the conversion at the state level in Maryland took place in the sixties where property tax responsibility was shifted to the local county charter. And it's something that the council does to put up guardrails when the county executive recommends a budget, he or she has some idea of how much they can spend. Now you'll see the schedule starts with revenues and there are no spending affordability guidelines from the council on that. This is based on forecasts that the executive makes. And I'll point out that the property tax forecast for this year is a little bit less, 1.931 million dollars versus 1.951 million dollars for an estimated for the current year, which ends in a couple of months. But the, because of higher appraisals, the executive was forecasting $2.2 billion in property tax revenue for next year, significant increase. And it's also factored with a 10% increase in the rate that is applied for those higher rate. So that gives you a whopping 14% increase in the projected property tax revenues. Income tax revenues, on the other hand, are about the same. And this is, if you see last year, the budget was 1.9 billion dollars in income tax revenues. It's about the same in the coming budget. And this is disturbing to us because we, we don't believe that the likelihood that incomes will be maintained at the same level that they have in, in the past year is, is good. And so this is an area where they're likely to have overshot the forecast, which will be updated in June. And they'll have an opportunity to revise the budget they've just approved that they had to make. MCPS, that's the big elephant in the room. And here you can see proposed 10% increase over the spending affordability guideline that the council came up with just a month before the executive issued his budget. And that's dramatic. Basically, the county executive will funding the requested budget from the school system, which includes $264 million above the state maintenance of effort minimum. And this is important. When we spend more than the maintenance of effort minimum on MCPS, that raises the bar for the next year. The next year, the minimum that we can spend is whatever the prior year was. And by increasing it by 10%, we've basically gobbled up a lot of future revenue in fiscal '25 that may not be there because of the after effects of the recession. Now to, to pay for this, the county executive proposed a 10% property tax rate increase. And that's where the debate is. But we feel the debate also has to be on how much money the school system needs to do its job. And I'll come, I'll come back to that in a second.
So again, the, the budget is basically made for paying off unions and, I mean, you can't deny that the, this, this support has been political. So this is one of the reasons why we're, we are where we are right now. Let's continue.
So you'll see a significant drop there and that's, that's an area of concern going into recession. There it is. And it says that the county will see continuous improvement of the productivity of county programs in terms of the quantity and quality of service relative to resources expended through all possible strategies.
Mr. Breen here is describing what the budget aims to cover, which is increasing productivity. And this is a vague statement made in the budget as to the objective and the goal of, of the budget, which is to increase productivity, which is, like Mr. Breen says, there's no details and there's no schedules, there's no actual language on, on further describing what the county wants to do to increase productivity.
So this is an example of lofty language that's a policy that is nowhere to be found in this budget document. There's no evidence, no schedule, no, no enumeration of any continuous improvement or savings plan. And I point this out because oftentimes policies are the, the result of very difficult strategies to navigate revenue constraints and program needs. And oftentimes the goal is simply to divide and satisfactorily increment on a prior year spending base, not to reexamine the entire spending that was in the full amount of budget. Okay.
Now, um, the league is going to talk, is going to talk about the annual percentage of GDP implicit price deflator, which is inflation. And he's gonna give a little details on, on that.
The economic outlook is, is where the assumptions that are made for the revenues in the coming year are outlined. And I want to highlight for you that the, the forecast is based on a mild recession and a modest growth in personal income. You can see where I'm highlighting. A mild recession and, and modest growth in personal income. Many economists are predicting a more severe recession. And as I pointed out earlier, we don't have the reserves to pay for what we approved in the budget if the revenue fall dramatically. And that will require a savings plan in July after the revised forecast comes out and possibly again in December. That's the second forecast, revenue forecast coming out. So that, that's anyway, the relative scenario. So turning down here, I'm gonna show you a budget trick, which we often see, and this is in the reserve area. If you look at line 30, 35, when the reserve, you see that the reserves, that's the one he set aside for recessions and other revenue declines, has dropped by 160 million dollars. And basically the, the county exec is doubling up that reserve amount to pay for pay raises that he's proposing in his recommended budget. This is where the, the executive proposes increasing the property tax by 10% using a dedicated property tax increase for the schools under a state law. He's overriding the county's charter to do this. And the simple reason for doing this is that under state law, a simple majority of six council members is needed to approve this 10% property tax increase. Whereas any property tax increase under the county charter requires a unanimous consent of all 11 council members. So it's a much lower bar to get this property tax approved. We, the Tax Payers League are concerned about this as we always are about property tax increases, largely because this burden falls on low-income folks and fixed income folks the most. And they've been saddled by the appraisal increase in the last year, which increased their property taxes. And there are other inequities in our property tax system.
He's gonna talk about other inequities in property taxes and, and many people don't know about this as, as I did, to be honest. So this is very interesting in terms of what constitutes as, as value to assess the property taxes, which I found very interesting. And it's basically something that is increasing inequity in, in low-income families and higher-income families and residents.
Either there's comprehensive bureaucracy or we rely on it. One of the, the most significant is the exclusion of new construction, I'm sorry, yes, the, the exclusion of tear downs and rebuilds, which are happening more and more in our older neighborhoods, where affordable housing is appraised and replaced with a McMansion. That construction is not treated as new construction immediately reappraised. It goes into the hopper for reappraisal three years later. Making that matter worse, many of our clever developers finalize their building permit before they raise the construction so that the land is appraised at land value only. And that matters, the folks living in unimproved housing are subsidizing wealthier residents in the county. And I mention this to you because property taxes aren't perfect, although the county has expressed very little interest in revisiting these flaws. And this is one of our, our long-term advocacy efforts. Turning to income taxes for a second.
So again, as I stated before in this episode, the county council pushes equity and justice, but they're not. They're just pushing a propaganda without any substance. And here again is an example of that hypocrisy. The lower income people are actually subsidizing the, the rich in terms of property taxes as explained by Mr. Breen. Now we turn to income tax. Income taxes are not growing, they're actually gonna decrease. And what, what creates income taxes, it creates, you know, that comes from jobs, from a thriving economy. If, if an economy is thriving and growing, then we'll have an increased income tax volume, which we're not. So this also represents a, a very important point that our economy is stagnant, it's not growing, and the county does not have any plan to address it. Income tax, here we go.
We can see that they have revised, if you read this paragraph, and I doubt many of you can see it that well, but basically the revenue forecast for income taxes were dropped from the December forecast because we're rapidly revising revenue as we get more information about the state's receipts of income taxes, particularly estimated income taxes. And there's another flaw on, fly in the ointment, which Esther Wells is probably more familiar with than I am, which is called past demand, which is recent court ruling that exempts them from paying taxes, and that could further reduce the, the revenue pay, not the income tax side. Okay, I'm gonna turn real quickly to next picture, folks. As you can see.
And yeah, this is a, a great presentation of, graphically of the tax burden on households. And, and again, even though it has increased since 2014 and, and decreased and so forth and so on, the, the burden relies on fixed income residents and low-income residents. And that goes against the racial and economic justice that the county council thrives on pushing. Here we go.
Tax burdens over time per household have increased to the point where they're forecasted to be $11,397, that's property and income tax. Now the point of this chart, however, is self-serving because it's designed to show that if we deflate that or we need effective inflation, our tax burden is only $9,254,000. Still a lot of money. And this is an average of averages, I would warn you. So for folks that are living on a pension or low-income folks, this doesn't provide any comfort at all. All right. The CIP budget was next on my list, which briefly, collective bargaining, which is the big elephant in the road.
So right now, Mr. Breen is gonna talk about collective bargaining. I stated before, the, the county made sure that all promises made to all the unions, all the, all the organizations that, that worked very hard last year for the, for, for the Democrat Party were basically taken care of. And this is just a, this is a, a demonstration of the, of that fact.
For MCPS, the county executive has bargained as provisionally as he knows how to and awarded to his various unions, everything they've asked. And it goes on for pages and pages here. This happens to be fire and rescue. This is MCGO, which is the General Government Employees Union. And that's followed by the police partnering unit. And we actually support a number of these initiatives because we had a challenge recruiting and retaining police in patrol units in Penrod, Old Wave. And there's a 20% with a $20,000 pay bonus in those package with folks that sign up. I want to show you briefly that there are detailed schedules here that show all the glory, glory elements that go into these packages. If, if you look closely at that line right down here, deferred increment, this is for the MCGO employees. He has generously awarded to the union employees a 3.5% pay raise for something they didn't get in 2012. This comes up every year. Every year it's caught and every year it's thrown back at them and it's scratched out. But you gotta, you gotta hand it to them, you know, you need precision. Okay, I'm running out of time, so I'm gonna turn real quickly to MCPS.
And here we go. Here's the, the large portion of, of the budget that is $3.2 billion that, on the surface, it looks good in terms of providing funds for our schools, for our children's education, but the fact that is, that is not. Throwing money at the problem is not resolving or addressing the issues that this budget should be addressing, which is to improve the quality of education, improve the scores of math, reading, and to in- increase the scores of low-income household kids. And again, the, the agenda of racial and, and economic justice is supposed to be doing this, but they're not. There's just funneling, using the, the school systems, the ecosystem as a, as a way to get funds to pay off their political support. Plain and simple.
Which is half the budget. There's a lot of people, half of those people, half of those 24,000 employees are teachers. That means half of them aren't.
So almost half of, of these employees are not teachers. Let that sink in. So we have a lot of administrative and, and non-teaching staff members. We need to cut those out. So again, this shows the inefficiency and the lack of transparency that the county council presents to the public.
Let's be asking ourselves, what do those people do? We just show that in the, in the budget, we do not include that $3.2 million, billion dollars, excuse me, that the school system is asking for, doesn't include all this money that the county provides above and beyond in $3.2 billion. It's a total of $364 million. That includes debt service on all those school buildings. The county pays that out of general, general revenue fund. If it's not paid, we'll buy the school system out of its budget. Pre-funding, retiree benefits, we talked about that. That is also something the county picks up, although they do not pay for it in general revenue fund. And support services, 125 million, and technology modernization. It's very important and I'm pleased to see that the executive is included in this budget. The fact that the budget's really $3.5 billion. And if you want to find out how much we're spending for students, taking enrolled members, you divide it into that value, 3.5 billion, not the 3.2 billion. That's for apples to apples comparison if I was a school student. I'm gonna show you a brief history of spending, because a lot of you probably want to know how the budget got so big.
And this is a great example of how the education budget increased through the years. Actually, it's a very, very interesting that the, the data here shows the start date of '85. which is the first time I I entered the M C P S. Very interesting. So it it was uh, you know, four hundred million dollars and then it it ballooned to to the numbers that we have now.
Over time is the answer. Getting back in nineteen eighty-five, the school system budget was a mere four hundred million dollars, of which three hundred thirty million was from the county. The rest was from the state, very small share. And that brings you all the way up to present where the request for next year is three point two billion dollars, two billion coming from the county and the state and the feds picked up the remaining one from two billion. You'll also look in this first column to see enrollment numbers. And that's important to notice that between fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-three, enrollment dropped, nearly four thousand students. And we're barely creeping up this year. We're back to one hundred sixty-one thousand, but we're nowhere close to where we were before the pandemic lockdown. Hundred sixty-one, eight hundred thirty-one thousand. So that that should give you a general feeling for the the M O E budget, the maintenance of effort budget is based on state law, ten percent of what M C P S spend is for non-instruction. We feel that steals money from kids. Kids that are struggling with reading and math need more instruction.
So again, um, the forty-five percent of the of the M C P S budget not going to teaching or for instruction is negatively affecting um low-income kids who are seeing their math and reading scores go down. So again, where's the racial economic justice that the county spews about all the time?
And we compared that to Fairfax County and we found that Fairfax County only spends thirty-seven percent of their budget on non-instruction. That's hundreds of millions of dollars more being spent by Montgomery County than Fairfax County because we don't manage our non-instruction costs as well. That's hundreds of millions of dollars more being spent by Montgomery County than Fairfax County because we don't manage our non-instruction costs as well.
So we can use that those savings if we didn't, if we cut up the non-instruction staff or budget to thirty-seven, thirty-five percent, that's millions of dollars. We could use that to to hire new teachers or to create incentives for teachers to stay in in the county because a lot of teachers are leaving the county for many reasons. We'll we'll touch that in another episode. But um, you know, the issue is is ongoing.
You might ask yourself, what are we getting from all this money? Well, a lot of it salaries. In the proposed budget, there's a huge salary increase. Two hundred million placeholder has been set aside for a a budget negotiation of the union that has yet to be completed. And uh, that is based largely on this idea that we have to have a cross-simply aboard pay raises both in low-income and higher-income schools to recruit and retain teachers. The taxpayers league believes that lower-income teachers have to work longer days, have to work harder at communicating with parents, that with more and more interventions with kids before, during, and after school, and deserve more money. And so we're advocating for differential pay as opposed to a cross-simply board pay raise. And uh, the union is not pretty happy with it. The policy of the union is similar to uh the policy of teacher unions around the nation. That is a level of pay scale for all teachers in all schools. Uh, we feel that this is an application of trickle-down economics in such a thing that now you pay teachers in higher-income schools more money, it's going to trickle down to lower-income schools. And those have worked. Process for awarding these uh contracts and grants has changed. Uh, many of these contracts, like the passive contract, are now embedded in the individual.
So here, uh, the league touches on CASA and funding for NGOs uh in the county. And again, as stated earlier in this episode, these NGOs, these institutions, these organizations, they actually uh should be doing um social and and work, et cetera. But they're not. They're a political arm of the county council and the executive in order for them to push their agenda, as shown earlier in this episode, to push their um uh their narratives of of education is first or eh, you should fund every, you know, all all the budget for the for for the M C P S because the kids need it. Well, as as you just saw from this presentation from the Montgomery County Taxpayer's League, the money is not actually going to the students. Their money is going to salaries that are for non-teachers, non-teaching, none for no instruction whatsoever. So again, um, this uh information is is should awaken a lot of people. Share this information, share this episode, these um these news broadcasts everywhere so people can can learn what's really going on and and should.
That concludes the presentation of the Montgomery County Taxpayer's League. I think I tried to give you guys the the high points of of the presentation. There's there's of course a lot more to dig into. But I thought these were the most uh relevant for for everybody. Now I will give you my analysis of of what uh the presentation uh revealed.
There's no accountability over fifty percent of the budget items. M C P S budget not focused on on money for instruction. Budget caters to pay off political support, unions, NGOs. Budget squeezes the middle class, middle and and the working class. No details on how the county will address productivity, heavy support to racial economic justice, a lot of money included in that. And there's heavy support for climate change, both which are very um very obscure, very vague concepts.
As in any budget process, we have winners and losers. And in this case, uh, we have uh different uh information uh sources that have actually touched on this. So this is one of them.
From Montgomery perspective, um, they have decent articles, um, and this are articles written by Mr. Adam Pernuccio. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong. But here it is. And he writes, uh, he takes a stab at the winners and losers of of the budget. And he goes on to say that, yes, Eldridge didn't get the ten percent tax hike, but he got he got uh four point seven, which is not bad. And with this, he's going to, of course, increase his political capital and and use that uh for later on. And of course, the county employee unions have greatly benefited. And let me ask you a question. If you if you own, um, if you're a leader or a CEO of an NGO and that NGO uh gets funding from, I don't know, company X, then you would be, you know, it would it would serve you best not to criticize company X. So this is what's happening. Uh, the the NGOs and the unions don't criticize the county council and the government because they receive funding from them and it makes sense. Um, yes, uh, Republicans, uh, yeah, we didn't, we didn't get any seats. We didn't get any these, any, any, any winners in the midterms, but we're still, you know, thriving. And let me make a make a point here about um politics. So at this point of of our occupation in 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 the county by the extreme far left, it's not, it's not about um Republicans, it's not about Democrats, it's not about independents, it's not about uh libertarians, it's about um being united in one voice um to uh hold the county council and the executive accountable to what they're doing. The Democrat Party has been in control of of the county for over forty years. And everything that we see here is a result of their leadership. And I hate to use leadership because um it's not, it's not a word that should be um next to uh the Montgomery County government. So let's continue. Northern Virginia is the winner. Um, the uh, the decline of quality of life um because of crime, education, et cetera, is pushing businesses and and residents to uh Northern Virginia, which are increasing their uh economic activity, they're increasing their um uh student enrollment, et cetera. Who are the the losers? Well, I I beg to differ with with the author here, but um, he says the county council. Uh, the county council is a is a capture operation by the far international left. And they don't, they don't, they don't, they don't work for us. And and they, you might see uh this lady, Donna Luki or um Marilyn Balcomb uh give opinions and and hold forums. Why do they need to hold forums? They know what the problem is. Do something, say something. But again.
I stated earlier in the in the episode, uh, I told you that um uh new grassroots uh information sources have appeared and this this is one of them. Um, a clean slate Moco, which I find very interesting and very uh active in terms of providing um actual factual information that other media sources, the mainstream uh local media doesn't provide.
This source of information, um, clean slate Moco, which the sources I found to be very refreshing and and actually objective in in their opinions. And right here, he talks about um the the budget for education and uh for the graphic people here, we see he talks about um enrollment. He talks about how uh since uh two thousand, for example, enrollment has increased, but it decreased, um, you know, uh during after the pandemic and it's slowly picking up. So the budget doesn't align with that with that uh with this reality that enrollment is increasing. We don't need a lot of money if enrollment is is decreasing. And here's the enrollment um in in the orange bars and the uh horizontal line uh describes the operating budget. So as you can see, there is a a very high correlation of enrollment and 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 the budget. But again, right here is a disconnect. There's a spike in 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 the operating budget, but there's a decline in in enrollment. So that doesn't make any sense. It's not doesn't follow the trend um in previous years. And here's the um nominal uh operating budget for for the school for the years. And here we have um uh over increase right here. So our our analysis that says that the 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 county budget is used to um pay off political support and and favors, this aligns very well with that. And here we have uh year-over-year in change in operating budget. And of course, in two thousand and eleven, we had the um, it was uh, I believe, the the effects of the great uh recession that we had. And here we go. Here's the cost per student uh in in nominal uh nominal number. And here we have uh the same number in in inflation uh adjusted for inflation. So we we see here that cost per student has has actually decreased since since two two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine. So the investment we're making on students has declined over over year since since that year. So and then here's the bigger, here's the percent proficient in terms of um the elementary school and middle school and high school. So we have, and if we throw money at the problem, that's not the issue. That uh, that the efficiency actually is is decreasing in in elementary school, middle school, and high school. So the the data doesn't doesn't lie. It will, like we said before in our initial uh introduction in this episode, we're here to put to provide facts, to provide uh data and to to provide a little bit of analysis in order for you guys to to make, you know, to make your own um educated uh opinions and and basically the the end of this episode, but I would ask you to to please um share this information, share this this channel with friends and family. And our goal again is to make sure that uh all the information, that the the facts are are going to the county residents and that this information be useful for them to make an educated uh opinion and and to uh reach out, to get involved in in community, in local politics because it affects all of us. We are the resistance. Join us. Thank you very much. See you at the next episode. Bye-bye.
Finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole armor of God, that ye may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places.